Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
This is the Monday, October 5th, 2020 School Board, regular School Board meeting. I'd like to welcome you all and we will go ahead. Okay, I don't know where that came from, but apparently you can hear me twice. So, anyway, I will go ahead and get started with our, I'll call the meeting to order at 6:01 and we'll go ahead and start with roll call. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Christensen?
I'm here.
Mr. Derrick's?
I'm here.
Ms. Fair?
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Tower? Let me know that she is ill this evening and will not be present this evening. And then the chair is here, so we have six board members in attendance this evening. If you wouldn't mind, rising and we'll say the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everybody. I have asked Mr. Derrick's to share a vision statement this evening.
The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, so our board meeting agenda has been posted on the board book and on our school district website. Does anybody have any changes to be made to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. This is Janie.
Motion made by Janie, or seconded by, was that you, Jim?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Fair.
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that's six to zero. Thank you. Just call attention to the educational plan, that's always a piece of our agenda packet. And the first item on for tonight is upcoming events and recognitions. Who would like to start? Janie?
Well, I have a really neat story actually for tonight. So I wanted to recognize Rosemary Hornley, who is a community member. I guess she is a substitute teacher in the district in the past, but she has been attending this year's cross-country meets and she's just a lady, a 73-year-old lady, which I don't think she would mind me telling everybody, but just this really spunky lady that is cheering on her kids and really, Brecken, you know who I'm talking about, right? She's just really is encouraged by having young people do physical activity and have something to do. And when I spoke to her today even, she just talks about how, you know, as a high school student herself, you know, she didn't have the opportunity to participate in high school athletics and how with Title IX and different things, like how she's so proud that, you know, we're able to offer activities to girls and the boys and just have some competition for them. And she's still running races at 73 years old and she's just a little spark plug. And I felt like I wanted to share that with you guys, it's kind of during these times of not many highlights these days. She definitely is somebody that's blessing people during the cross-country meet. So Rosemary Hornley, thanks so much and blessings to you as you come out again this week and watch our kids run at the conference meet. So just wanted to share that. And Carson, if I can, I think that would be an awesome little video or kind of thing for our activities department to maybe highlight her story because she definitely just had a great message. And I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Janie, for the suggestion. I'll make sure Paul is aware of it.
Yep, and I have her contact information if he, when he needs it, so.
And maybe even for Megan Suie in our communications department, that might be a really great story as well. I need to back up just a little bit and also say thank you and welcome to our three student School Board members this evening, Alan Hansen and Brecken Hill and Hans Liedahl, they're all here this evening. So thank you so much for joining us tonight, we've missed seeing you in person. And Brecken's name is in the queue. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have a couple of recognitions and events that are coming up. One that is most notably about to happen, October 9th, is the outdoor movie night put on by Student Council. So it'll be social distancing and masks required, but they want to get, they want to get students together and they want people to hang out outside of school while we still can outside. And so we're having an outdoor movie night, October 9th at 7:00 PM. So I know it's just a really great idea brought forward by Student Council and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And then to, and then Key Club is starting back up. Tomorrow, Key Club has their first meeting at 8:30 AM. So any parents or students that are watching, I'd recommend that you send your kids our way and it's a great, it's a great way to meet people, have friends, and just help other community and just overall be really involved. Those are my two things. Can't think of anything else off the top of my head, but yeah, things are starting to get moving at the high school.
It's really great to hear, thank you so much. Do either of the other students have anything they would like to add or share in there? Alan, go ahead.
Um, we're, have a play going on, it's called Every U.S. Selection Ever. It'll be for viewing on, like TV, we don't exactly know what channel yet though, at the end of this month, the 29th and 30th, I believe, although our show dates have been kind of being pushed around a little bit. And practices have been social distance, mask required, and still seeing with the Activities Department if we could even put on like a teacher showing or something like that, but that's going really, really well. And we had our first run-through the other day and so all the kids are really, really excited who are involved in the arts to be back in and performing again and being able to be a part of the whole theater family that we have at the high school.
That's great, thank you so much. Anything else from the students?
Uh, no, I think they covered most of it.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Anderson?
Yeah, I'll just like to point out that Mr. Nemanich announced that homecoming will be October 26th through the 30th. More details will be forthcoming. Of course, it'll look a lot different than in previous years, but just wanted to give you a chance to save the date with more information coming.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no other recognitions or.
Sorry, I had one more, I'm sorry. Don't worry. Um, I was recently talking with Mrs. Mickelson and we were just wanting to talk about how great the seventh graders at the, at the high school has been going. The seventh graders have actually been really well at the high school and it's been really great having them in their own pod. And so I'm sure parents, they've been worried like, oh, my middle schooler's at the high school, right? Like that's to be kind of scary. But I just want to say, as a high schooler, it's, it's being handled very, very well. The seventh graders are, are all together in their own pod and they all have their own times that they walk in the hallway and it's just being handled really well at the high school. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that was, that's really great going at the high school and that the board did a really good job like discussing that and figuring that out.
Thank you so much for sharing that because it's really important for us as a board to hear that. It's difficult for all of us to get up there and hear and see firsthand how that's going. And so we really appreciate hearing from that as well because that is a concern that we've had, I know, so thank you. All right, any other recognitions or upcoming events? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. I have not received any public comment. Superintendent Anderson, have you received any?
I have not.
Okay, so then we will move on to School Board reports. Starting, I'm just going down the list here, Finance Committee, anything new to report tonight? Nothing?
Give me a second to bring it up and.
Okay.
And I'll do a report in a minute.
Okay. While you're doing that, should we move on to Operations and we'll come back to you, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, please do.
Okay, anything from Operations that anyone would like to share?
Sure. I'm going to go here, Operation 18. First discussion for the land lease by the Communications Tower. Question came up on that compatibility between the tower lease and potential land use around the tower. And that will be coming back probably directly to the board at a future meeting. We also talked about the clinic lease for our school-sponsored clinic. Being recommended at this time for the new higher lease, we youth outreach as a landlord in our pool district, for many years, and should be presented for approval at a future School Board meeting also. And we also discussed non-school use of our facilities during COVID. Should we be allowing groups to rent space out of our school buildings at this time? And if so, what organization, what criteria? And, and that was sent back for more work from the administration end and that will be brought back to the School Board at our, directly to the School Board at our October 29th, or October 19th School Board meeting, I'm sorry. Also heard a little bit about participation in our school lunch program and I, and there is a concern that we are lagging behind on, on the applications for free and reduced lunch. It's not needed at this time for the lunches because the federal government is reimbursing all school lunches, but we need to get that in place so when that program from the federal government ends, we are able to recoup with these, with our families, some of the costs as we go forward and that potentially, I don't remember the exact number of what we're behind, I thought it was around 30% of the applicants in prior years, we are missing at this time. And it could affect our budget on food service several hundred thousand dollars or a few hundred thousand dollars, so. But it was a good meeting and maybe Jim has some more to add, I'm not sure, I'll leave it to Jim.
Thank you. Yeah, I just echo a little bit what Alan said, people out there that aren't filling out that information, we, you know, they may not think they need to do it. We do need it because it's two, $300,000 that we would be out. That's a lot of coin. And on top of that, Brent told us that the federal government now has approved the lunch program through the end of the school year, so.
Heidi, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I do have something relevant to this discussion. I had an MSBA board meeting yesterday afternoon and one of the legislative pieces going forward is holding harmless, holding school districts harmless for the compensatory counts. So we're talking about folks filling out that free and reduced lunch application and we know people, that's lagging this year because everybody's saying, well, why do I have to, you know, lunch is free? But it's not only the nutritional money, those FRP or free and reduced lunch counts also affect compensatory revenue because it's a measure of what the revenue is coming into your district, it's a measurement of student needs. And so we're going to ask the legislature, because of the problem you guys just described, to hold us harmless this year on the compensatory money. And the compensatory money is, is help, is used to help students catch up. So it could go to different services, different programs. So it not only affects the nutritional program, but those FRP applications also affect other funding streams within school districts. So if you weren't aware of that prior to tonight, you should, you should be seeing more information about that coming forward. That's one of the top, I believe, resolutions that the Delegate Assembly will pass and will be part of the legislative platform going ahead for this next session in January. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
That's really good to know, thanks for that information, Heidi. Anything else from Operations? Oh, Carson?
If I could jump in and just further clarify. So the free and reduced lunch rates are lower and as Heidi described it, it directly impacts compensatory education, could be $200,000, $300,000 for next year, maybe even a little bit more. But just a reminder that the compensatory dollars, it comes out of the general fund. So the, you know, having fewer free and reduced lunch applications actually impacts the general fund, so just want to let you know.
Thank you for clarifying that. Anything else from Operations? All right, Mike, we'll circle back to you for Finance.
All right, thanks. We met, you know, last week. Jackie presented our financial reports, our spending is a little bit ahead of where we were last year and that is due to the COVID back-to-school preparations. Food service, in a similar fashion, we've spent a bit more than we have compared to previous years due to the running of the summer food program, for which we will get reimbursed. Community, Community Service Fund has spent not nearly what they did in previous years, also due to COVID, so everything is based on that. Right now, it looks like the Community Service Fund may have a nearly $59,000 deficit to the fund balance. I think our budget expected a greater loss than that, so I guess that's a win. And then in enrollment, if you'll recall, we, we took out 130 students from our budget forecast last year in anticipation of a decrease in student, student enrollment this year. And good or bad, we're currently 22 students, approximately 22 students ahead of the adopted budget projection, so we're only down 110-ish from what we were considering. We also looked at the change in student participation by grade and we're looking for those reports to be shared with the administration, which I believe they are, but to make sure that administrators of our buildings know about the flow in and out of students. We were looking at cash flow projections that could change with, with the COVID realities and with the potential that the state might borrow from us. They might not fund us if, we usually get it 90% in the year and 10% later. If we only get 70% in the year and then 30% at a later point in time, we were looking at what that might do to our balance, but right now it looks like we can make it without any borrowing, but we'll be very tight at times and we'll just, everything will be very much in flux as we go through the year. And, but the preliminary look that we have makes it look all right. We were also concerned about insurance renewal costs. Property and liability increased around 12% and the workers' compensation decreased by 6%. We have a, a Labor Management Meeting coming up, which deals with our insurance for staff and we'll find out more about what those costs might be. I won't mention anything, I, I thought I heard something about it, but I'm not going to say because I'm not sure. And, but otherwise, it's looking fairly decent for us, given all the unknowns that we've had. I think we took a very conservative approach to budgeting this year and it was not out of line to do that. I mean, being 22 students off and counting the student population is, is pretty good when we were fundamentally winging it at the time. So Jim or Heidi, if you have any additional input on that?
The only thing I think, Mike, I'll, I'll expand on, we talked about enrollment and doing a survey of why people are not coming here and I didn't see that in the minutes, but we talked about that. And like you said, sharing and talking with the admin, school building administrators so they're aware of what's, what it is and maybe they have some ideas and why the enrollment is declining and get them at least informed and, and get them on board with the information, so.
Right, that was a, something that we've been looking at for a, for a while and we, we haven't come around to a full, a full accounting and, and understanding of what it is that, that's causing all these things. And we're looking at maybe expending a little bit of money to get a professional survey done so that we can get the answers faster than, than trying to count on our staff doing it in the, whatever time they can squeeze out of their day. Yeah, thanks, Jim. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on my list is Personnel.
Thank you, Pam. We did meet today, so I just wanted to make sure the rest of the board was aware of, definitely of a couple of things. We talked with Sheri about some special ed staffing and of course, that need is there for that extra special ed admin that we've talked about with our futures. You know, look at our whole district, so I think, well, we know we're going to have to look at that seriously and we did ask Carson to figure out, you know, how we're going to make that financially, you know, work out whether that's shifting some other things, but we really did feel, feel like obviously that's something that we have to do and that it might show cost savings in other areas too, so. No, that's on there. And then I mainly want to make sure that everyone's aware, in two weeks, we're going to have on the agenda a leave of absence request that we are going to bring to the full board. The administration has been working on an MOU for an employee and we definitely want a fair resolution for all and the committee kind of went back and forth about how to deal with this or what to do with it and we definitely just felt like we should finally bring it to the full board to see where everybody was at for it. So definitely a special request, kind of that February 1st deadline was missed for the extended leave of absence that we have in the contract, but with COVID and some other things, definitely some different, we want to make sure that we're being flexible and just being sensitive to the times that we are in. So just look for that in two weeks and I'll direct you to Carson for maybe some more specifics because I'm not sure exactly how much information we'll put in that. Carson, I don't know if that'll be on the consent agenda or what it will be, but I just want to make sure people are aware of it. And then just real quickly, I'll maybe, Pam, if it's okay, just negotiations is continuing and ongoing, we did start with the custodians and we're continuing on with principals and directors. And then I do want to highlight that, you know, Carson's contract will be up too, so that's something we're going to have to address also. We did talk about at custodian chat with, about contract, about negotiations that we should have a full board discussion of just kind of what parameters and our strategy for the coming year because obviously there's lots of considerations, so, yeah. Do you want me to, Pam, I, I do have an update on kind of District Advisory and the LMC, do you want me to wait or should I just go ahead with that?
Uh, you can go ahead with that, but Superintendent Anderson, is it my understanding that at our next board meeting, we'll have a closed session to kind of discuss some of those parameters?
Yeah, I'll just respond to two points that Janie brought up. First, the extended leave of absence would be included on the consent agenda like we normally would. And then second, yes, there will be a closed session to discuss custodial negotiations and kind of overall estimates as far as where we expect settlements to land.
Sounds good. Okay, go ahead, then you can finish.
I'll keep it really quick, but District Advisory Committee is continuing and going on, Jess Wickholm and Mick Wenland are arguing that, so we are meeting October 8th and I just wanted to make sure, I know Heidi's aware of this, but they are merging two committees together, the Old District Advisory and then the Flight Pass Committee, which seems like a really good idea. So that should be, continue to be a good, robust committee that we can bring lots of issues to. And then, so we are meeting on the 8th for that. And then I just wanted to bring up again on LMC, we're meeting this week again. We didn't come to a final decision last week because there was a lot of questions still about wellness and just kind of what each insurance group was going to offer us with that, so we definitely just took some more time and we were able to work with our, I forget what they're called, Carson, is Lynn, like kind of our advisory insurance group, I don't know what the right term, we're good with that, but.
Insurance consultant.
Perfect, insurance consultant, but they were really helpful in making sure our committee had the information we, we needed to make a good decision. And like Mike inferred to, we're going to see some pretty steep increases and, you know, we can bring it up at the next committee meeting, but I'm sure everybody is aware that healthcare is not something that is being saved on these days. So that should be at the next School Board meeting for consideration though, I believe, so. Thank you, and that's all I have, Pam, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Janie. Anything from Legislative or Policy Committee?
Uh, no, I think we updated you at the last board meeting about, but I do have quite a bit of information from the MSBA board meeting. We went through initially, initial look at legislative resolutions, I have some information about the Leadership Conference and then some other dates that the board might be interested in. So I'll, I'll start with the legislative resolutions, there's a few less this year than we normally have. So I think we've whittled down to about 12 instead of usually 20 to 25. I already mentioned the one, hold harmless, the compensatory counts so that school districts aren't harmed by all these great shifts due to a pandemic. Another one that will make sense to the board is stabilizing funding for student counts for this year. So that's again, a whole harmless approach for pupil counts and I won't get into the technicalities, but as Mike reported earlier, we've had a huge, we intended that we would, or estimated that we would lose 130 students. And again, if you lose enough students, you get some compensatory money if it all happened in one year, but we're just asking the state to just this year, because things have changed rapidly and wildly in unpredictable ways, to just hold us harmless right now, let's just strap in and do what we can for those two student count pieces. Also kind of related to that is removing instructional hours requirement. And I think this will ultimately work in Red Wing's favor for a couple of specific reasons. We're starting to do under that Winger Flight Pass program, a lot of service learning or internships and we want to be sure that those count as student investment in their education. And so, and then there's a, and I, we could go deep into this, not now, but students learn at different rates, so is it okay if your student graduates in five years instead of four because they needed more time to get through something? And we recognize that between Gen Ed and Special Ed, there's different timelines for those folks. So anyway, that's, that's, I think, something that needs to be discussed. And then I'll just briefly mention two others. One is what we already brought up about the State Auditor's Office being interested in doing school audits. And I think they've already received $700,000 from the legislature to try to get this idea up and running. MSBA is not in favor of that at this time. And again, this is the first blush, so we'll see how it shakes out, but we just want to maintain district authority for deciding our own audit firms. And then the other last one I'll mention is, under education programs, recognize that virtual contact will qualify for targeted service funding in a distance learning model. So again, it's a, it's something driven by our virtual environment. How can we look at the student contact and assess that in a different way because the normal, usual way won't exactly work out for anybody? So those are just five, five of the legislative pieces that I feel will be pretty. So those are just five, five of the legislative pieces that I feel will be pretty strongly um at the top of uh their time and attention this year. Um, you're hearing it first because it hasn't been here tonight because it hasn't been formally announced by M S B A. But um, it looks like the leadership conference will be virtual. So instead of that um, that week or half a week in uh. January. It looks like it's going to be held right now. The latest information is Thursday mornings. On January fourteenth, twenty-first and twenty-eighth. Um, and those will be live. We will have recorded and online um pieces available. Uh elections still need to take place for the district director. Um, there will be a change in bylaws this year. We've really overhauled them quite thoroughly. We even took out the reference to the Telegraph, so. It's been a long time since they were updated. And then we also want to provide um some social opportunities. We've. Really missed kind of getting together at regional meetings. And chatting and just having that informal, hey, how are you guys doing? What's new in your district? What's the barrier? What's the good news? Um. So anyway, just a heads up um that that that's the direction that they've determined we need to move into. We will not have as many workshops, but we will still have a pretty good number. Usually we have around eighty. Between workshops and round tables. It will not be eighty, um but it could be fifty. Um fifty to sixty maybe. Um, you'll have two keynote speakers, one on the first Thursday and one on the second Thursday, so it will mirror a little bit of what we've done before. So anyway, stay tuned for more details. Um then some upcoming dates, Thursday, October fifteenth, they're doing a series of seminars on the third Thursdays. This time around, and I really urge you to take advantage of this opportunity. Um, it's going to be Tom Melcher, who was the Finance Director for Minnesota Department of Education. A real whiz, a real guru. I mean, if you get a chance to listen to him, he can lay out a lot of stuff that makes sense uh with a very complicated. Uh public education funding in Minnesota. Um, and I can't tell you what time that is. I tried to find it and I I'm short on that, but look up M S B A and register for that. That's on Thursday, October fifteenth. Friday, October sixteenth, they're starting something new called Coffee and Conversation. So on the sixteenth Friday morning from eight to nine, that will be southern Minnesota. So it'll probably be everything along the southern border of Minnesota or south of I ninety. Um, so if you're interested in that, that's available. Um, I think that's it. Um. One thing, and I've already put this in front of Carson and um Lisa Steggerda is. Uh, the new phase one and phase two trainings for the new people get elected this fall. I would really urge that those folks take advantage of those trainings in December. I believe Jim did that and then went on to the January conference. So it kind of broke things up if you need to juggle your work schedule or your family life. Um, so those, those are out there too. And then I believe there'll be another coffee and conversation again in December. About mid-December, so stay tuned for that one. And that was a lot, but that's all I have right right now. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Heidi. Other? Any other board? Meetings or committees that anyone would like to highlight?
Paula just mentioned the the S S C Southeast Service Co-op Board Meeting that uh went last month. Uh, the service co-op is working hard on, along with the other service cooperatives at. Uh streamlining and uh broadening their pool of of uh. Of people in in the insurance, running their insurance pool. Uh. Uh so sharing all of the uh. Uh sharing the pool with the entire state, although we're working on smaller districts separate from larger districts. But the hope there is that when we get a larger pool available to us, that we will get more competitive rates and we'll be able to get more. Uh more contracts, which is where a lot of the service co-ops get a lot of their revenue from. Uh, they started out. Doing that because smaller districts were unable to get insurance. Because they were too small, they were too, the pool wasn't big enough to assume the risk. So they're, they're moving forward on that end. Um. If that works, that should be a a good benefit. It gives us a little bit of a. It gives the service co-ops a little bit of uh leverage against. Uh P E P, the Public Employees Plan. That uh has been making headway legislatively for years and it's. Uh, some unions think it's the best thing and uh. Uh, the, if the service co-op, what we are seeing is. Or what we think we're seeing is that they're. They're uh. Doing a caught, now let's see, what do they call it? Bait and switch? That's unfair, but it looks like they, they might be offering lower rates initially. And then in order to keep those rates, well, they won't be able to keep those rates as as insurance costs increase. That's the. That's what concerns us and then everybody is already committed to P E P and then it's all a public. Employee thing and it's all publicly funded. Uh with with minimal input from the districts that need to pay for the plans. Uh, also. Uh, they will be having a new election for board members for the Southeast Service Co-op. It's an extremely rewarding job. Uh, the staff and. Board of Directors there are really, really excellent people. Uh thoughtful, uh smart and and concerned about. Keeping uh public, keeping public entities uh moving forward. They do training. They uh, like I said, they do uh insurance plans. It's a, it's a really interesting job and my term is up at the end of this year. So they're looking for people to take uh to offer themselves up to join. They meet once a month. Uh, you get uh, if they have it in person, which we haven't lately. They pay you for the ride down to Rochester and back. You get a stipend per meeting. Uh, and you get to talk with different people from district, different districts and smaller local governments. And it's just a, it's a really great opportunity to learn more about how government works in the state of Minnesota. And uh if someone on this board might be interested in doing that or somebody. Uh, who comes on the board, shows any kind of interest, although uh that they will assume it in January. If there's anybody, if there's anybody who takes it. If nobody takes it, I might be able to serve another year. But I think it would really benefit this board to have somebody down there. Uh, it's, it's a really tremendous opportunity and uh. Yeah, that's about it. They uh. Hopefully they'll get the insurance thing going because they have a great insurance guy down there who's gonna be working for the state. Uh for the entire service cooperative group. And uh. It looks promising, so we're hoping for the best. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Heidi?
Yeah, I should have included a brief update um on Minnesota State High School League. Uh, I know we were notified and informed of the dues. That dues bill is to get us, to get Minnesota State High School League through this year, twenty twenty-one. Seventy-five to ninety percent of their revenue relied on state tournaments. And without state tournaments, you don't have that revenue and they already cut four staff, so. And 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 they realized there's a communication gap and they've struggled with that for years. They're supposed to be emailing out to the reps, the local board reps. And the uh uh activities directors. So I think there will be some further communication about the situation. Coming from M S B A partnered with the superintendents group, M A S A. Um, to um reach outreach, to reach out to the superintendents around the state because. Nobody was really pleased to see, you know, the increased um. Invoice from M Minnesota State High School League. So uh again, I just wanted to add a little bit more information about that. It's been obviously an extremely challenging situation. Um, the Minnesota State High School League Board met on October first, as you're probably mostly aware. Um, it made some more changes. They have not finalized the winter sports pieces yet. Um, they hope to do live streaming of um the championships. Um, or well, they're not doing championships, they're doing regionals, sectionals and that type of thing. So again, um, I would urge this board, if you're not satisfied with that communication, please get back to them. And make sure that they know what our activities director communication piece is, our board rep um communication piece. And I I know again, it's, it's a difficult year for everybody. And Minnesota State High School League really felt like they were in a box with nowhere else to go. Um, with, like I say, seventy-five to ninety percent of their revenue coming from state tournaments. And the biggest of those were football and hockey and of course football's not. Happening in the way that it normally does and I'm not sure what hockey looks like. So I just wanted to know, wanted you to know a little bit more.
Thank you. Any other board? Uh reports? I will add two things. One is uh for the public's uh information. On September twenty-eighth, this board met um and talked about. Uh equity at our monthly workshop and if you get an opportunity, it is online and you can look at that and view it. It was a, a, an. One of the best two hours I think this board has spent. We had a lot of um discuss, really great discussion. Um, we came up with a bit of an action plan, which is gonna be taken back to administration. Um, and then hopefully between administration and the board, we can come up with some goals uh in. Uh equity planning. The other piece I wanted to share with you is I've been. Attending uh M S B A Phase Three, Building a High Performance School Board Team. And I will say that it is extremely well done. Uh they use virtual format conferences. I've been very impressed. We've had actually um breakout sessions and it's all really well timed and it's been really fun to have small groups. Where we can actually have conversations and it's like you said, Heidi, we've actually had some. Opportunity to say, hey, how's it going for your district? And I think right now, especially in a pandemic. Situation, it's been extremely valuable to connect with board members from across the state. And talk about what are their frustrations, what are their joys, what can we learn from one another? So that's been extremely valuable. Uh Heidi, I'll turn it back over to you.
I'm sorry, I keep looking down at my notes and go, oh yeah, one more thing. Um, so on the equity piece, um yesterday afternoon, part of our board uh meeting, Board of Directors for M S B A was to listen. We had an actual presentation. From Justice Allen Page and Neil Kashkari, the Federal Reserve Chair, who. Used to be an aerospace engineer too, who knew? Um. But back to the, in that equity piece, I think for a long time we thought, well, that's not really us or what is equity and. Um, that's what's driving President Kashkari and Justice Page. They are dissatisfied. Um with the progress or lack of progress within um closing achievement gaps. And and in this state and with good reason, so. Um, I don't know that I learned anything new yesterday, um but uh. It's clear these gentlemen have a lot of passion and I and I understand where they're coming from. I think the discussion is, is this constitutional amendment going to do what they think it's going to do? Um, so again, I would urge the board to pay attention to that because it isn't just the Twin Cities thing. It's, we have equity issues here. And mostly they're fake, focused on racial disparities, but they also acknowledge um the poverty gaps and and stuff too. Um, so anyway, just really um grateful that I have the opportunity um these past few years to serve. Public school districts across the state and then M S B A has um. Dived into getting us these resource speakers right from um the the source about. Um current issues and I would encourage Red Wing to keep. Thinking that we're not over here by ourselves. We're all part of that picture too. Um, the other thing I wanted to add under the school board reports though was um Community Ed Advisory Council. Uh met at the end of last month. And um the Living Healthy Red Wing Program is sunsetting. That was. Tucked under Community Ed and we, they managed grants to keep that uh program going. But it seems to have reached kind of its natural end along with some funding issues and and duplicate work across the uh community, all good work. So that is sunsetting. Um. The Park Naturalist Program is still going and they've come up with some creative ways to come uh work in the community and connect with kids. And then the um fall brochure for Community Ed is out now. Um. I believe that there's no printed or limited print editions, but there, there's a virtual one. Um, and I was really surprised at the variety. I was thinking, well, what do you do in a pandemic? But they are still offering a variety of classes, both in-person and virtual. So I think um if uh. If you want to take advantage of one of those, board directors do have the opportunity to take a class for free. Um, it's part of helping you to get to know the Community Ed. Program and what we do for adult learning in this community and obviously. Children, opportunities for students too. Um unfortunately, due to different circumstances, uh pandemic, you know, there are pro- programs that they were not able to go forward with. Such as the um differently abled adult programs and and stuff at this time. But um please urge people to look it over. Um, and find a link on the website and there's still a lot of opportunities there, so thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that, Heidi. It's really important to know all of those pieces of information and, you know, Community Ed and REC, they're uh. They're such a great resource in our community. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the administrative reports. Superintendent Anderson?
Thank you, Pam. Um, I'll just briefly highlight some of the issues that are included in the written reports. Uh first, before the the actual update for this meeting, just a reminder that there is a. A written plan showing our progress towards implementation of the education plan. Uh, this year so far and right now it's a fourteen-page um summary of some of the things we're doing. Uh, it's just a good reminder that we are still planning to fulfill uh every promise in the operating levy referendum. And so please look through that uh document just to see how we're doing that during COVID. Uh, as far as this meeting is concerned, uh there are some notes from the Minnesota State College Southeast Advisory Council. Uh, one thing I'll point out is that they're applying for a grant related to maritime training and focus on the Mississippi River. Uh, what a great uh project for Southeast to take on. Uh because of our location, obviously, uh but they have a lot of very innovative, effective programming. Uh possibilities that they're exploring, uh largely thanks to Larry Lumblad and his administrative staff. Uh, there are also notes for the Child and Family Collaborative. Uh, they are planning to extend the contract to their director for another two years. Uh because the the funding uh looks strong uh in that area. Uh Jess Wickholm did develop a list of district committee um. Committees and then participants and so you can see the list of the different uh committees listed there. Uh, there are uh parents, staff members, several students. Uh, school board members. It's a, it's a great list of people who represent the community well uh in those different endeavors. Uh, as far as the second page, uh Jim mentioned this earlier. Uh, we will or we're planning to do a survey of families open enrolling out of the district. Uh, we have about two hundred families in that situation or at least two hundred kids. And so I did uh get a survey from another school district. I still need to receive approval to use the same questions from the superintendent there. Uh, but we are planning to conduct that survey in November uh or December. Uh, what I'm doing now is trying to figure out, should we have internal people doing it or if we, should we hire an outside source to make calls in a shorter period of time? One exciting thing that uh we're doing uh for grades five through twelve is that beginning second quarter, Tony Kashi. A math teacher at the high school will be working part-time as an instructional technology leadership coach. Uh, we're doing that by reallocating some staff assignments that George uh had in his building. As well as possibly using staff development funds. Uh, we're really excited about that because we know that our teachers need uh support. Uh, as far as teaching in the hybrid and distance and Tony Kashi is is an expert at that, so. Uh, he'll be starting that second quarter. In addition, we're planning to um, or we are posting for sixteen building tech contacts. A thousand dollars uh per person per year. And these folks will also be helping their colleagues with Google Classroom and other instructional equipment needs. Um, you know, during the school day. Uh, we are anticipating uh some funding from a local foundation. Uh, and if we don't. And if we don't secure that funding through, you know, local partners, then we'll use our staff development revenue to pay for those building contact leads. And then finally, the other item I'll highlight is one of our Board members in our individual meetings that we've been holding did ask about, you know, why are only employees with school health insurance using the school-sponsored health clinic? And, you know, when it was first created, there were a lot of concerns about who could use the clinic, the capacity of the clinic. And then, you know, also members who might choose just to rely on the clinic and not take health insurance. And then what would happen if there was a major incident? And so we didn't encourage, or we didn't allow those without health insurance to participate. The Personnel Committee may want to review this possibility because I think we can address each one of those items. So I don't have a recommendation. I think it should go through Personnel. And would need some changes in some district contracts. But I think it's something we should at least consider. And that's all I have unless there's some questions.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Thanks. Wasn't fast enough on the fingers. Carsten, this is in addition to the information you already gave us. I know people have been asking us about, well, do we do, you know, what about testing this year in the pandemic? And my understanding is we still need to carry forward with student testing because the feds, the federal government has not given us a waiver. They gave us a waiver in the spring because people were distance learning. But now, you know, we are still required to march through some testing. Is that correct?
Well, I can answer that in two ways. First of all, the local school district, well, Red Wing Schools conducts its own testing. Our primary testing source is Fastbridge. So we are following through with that. And we've, we're in the middle of our fall testing season. Hopefully, we can also have a winter test and then a spring test. In my mind, that's the best way we can monitor progress because we can see what happens throughout the school year, you know, with cohorts of kids. So we're starting that. In terms of state-required tests, we have not received any information indicating that they'll be canceled or anything like that. So we are assuming that we'll move ahead with all-state testing. We'll see what happens this winter and spring, but that's currently what we're assuming.
Thank you.
Do we have any updates on COVID-19 numbers or how things are going with all of that planning?
Yeah, thank you. I forgot to include the update from the county. The numbers are higher than ten, and that's the number of, you know, cases per thousand residents or per ten thousand residents. And so that, the recommendation then from the state is to have hybrid for secondary schools and in-person for elementary schools. That's been our plan since day one. We anticipated that hybrid would likely be needed at some point early in the school year. And unfortunately, we were right. And so we don't have any changes in our current programming for grades E through twelve at this time.
Janie, go ahead.
Thanks, Pam. You know, I just want to bring up to the full board, I didn't mention to Carsten. I don't know about others, but I am receiving lots of feedback from parents that just, you know, just the online learning isn't necessarily working the best for them and such. And so I just wanted to bring up that I think we should just, regardless of numbers right now, we always have to make sure that's important. But just, you know, what other benchmarks or what other possibilities we're going to be able to do in the future? You know, for instance, like in the high school especially, there's some classes that might only have two to four students in at a time, just because of how the alphabet goes and what kind of class it is. And I just think that seems kind of inefficient and not best for students that maybe could be coming in at a time. So I've just asked Carsten, I don't mind kind of bring it up to the full board too, just to make sure you're all aware of that too. Because I think we could still find some ways to give even better education to our kids and support our families while also being safe. So I just wanted to bring that up to everybody too for consideration.
Yeah, and just a quick response to that, I know at the last Board meeting, we talked about finding ways we could consider more in-person work, or at least to move towards in-person. I know that at the high school, they relaxed some of the expectations at the high school. We're still within CDC guidelines and state guidelines, but at least relaxed some things. As our student reps mentioned earlier, there are some more activities that are being planned because we're confident with our social distancing guidelines and COVID response plans. So hopefully, we're going to keep moving towards that. The adding more days for kids in grades five through twelve will definitely be considered, you know, as we move on. It'd actually be easier for fifth and sixth grade. The biggest issue has to do with grades K through four. And that's because we, you know, we have to follow room capacity limits by the state. And so, you know, if and when people from distance learning come back in person, it's a real struggle for us because we don't have openings in every school building currently. And so we're going to be soliciting information from parents to see if they're hoping to come back second semester. And then it's going to take quite a process to figure out who goes where. So we are considering those things. And, you know, we don't have any suggested changes right now, but at least it's on our radar.
Mr. Christensen.
Yeah. I think this kind of shows that opening up in the hybrid model was the conservative way to go. We knew that there would be changes throughout the year. I really don't understand people's rush to change things. We're just getting started in this model. There have been plenty of challenges all the way around. For the most part, we seem to be doing, we, meaning the community, as well as the district, doing a pretty good job managing what it is that we're doing. As far as people who opted out for distance learning, I don't think there's a huge risk of them wanting to come back, even if we went all-in every day, although maybe some would. I don't see that. But I just really don't see the rush to finding when we can get back together again. I think all you have to do is look at what's happening in the White House and seeing how contacting people who are not well spreads rapidly and broadly. And we're doing our best for distancing here in the district. Masks. I've talked to principals who say that the kids are doing a great job keeping their masks on, even the elementary kids. I mean, everybody is working hard to make this work, and it's a very difficult thing to make work. So I think we can really give ourselves a pat on the back. And our staff members, our teachers, our custodians, our paras, everybody is just knocking it out of the park, working to make this happen, working hard to make this happen. And to try to change something before a natural break in what we're doing semester is useless. It doesn't help anything. So let's get ourselves settled in now. And then once we find out that cases don't continue to go up, then we can do more about in-person learning or staying in the hybrid or going into all-distance. But making a change right now is way premature. And I hope you take some advice on that.
Yeah, and by the way, Mike, I should have mentioned that, you know, we feel very confident in, you know, the current learning models we are for, you know, grades E through twelve. And so we're transitioning into planning for other transitions. So, you know, what exactly do we need to do now so that we easily transition into more distance learning? Or what do we do now in case we move towards in-person learning? So we're kind of looking at transition plans both ways. So I hope we didn't, I hope I didn't portray that, you know, we were going to go in-person or anything like that, you know, right now. But we want our plans in place, yeah, so we can move either way.
We have to look, we have to continue looking at all three. But to set a time certain when we switch will more likely be determined for us than by us.
All right. Jim is in the queue, and then Heidi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good topic of conversation. I've had a few people, staff members, reach out and talk about how it's going. And it's, for some, it's not going that well with trying to do e-learning or distant learning and hybrid. They're struggling some. They're worried about their health. But neither one of us, when I talked to the last one, there was others, but the last one, you know, we had no solutions, mainly because, you know, we don't know what the COVID number is going to do next week. Nobody has that number. But this person had already talked to their building administrator. This building administrator was aware of that, is trying to do, you know, look at this and that. But, you know, the thing is, it's just like when we had to make a decision between distant learning, hybrid, and all-in. There's some on the staff level that want the kids to come back. There's some that want to do distant learning. And there's some that are probably just quietly getting by with what they do in the hybrid. So no matter what is decided or changed on the road, you're still going to have a group that are not ready to go that route. So taking caution, understanding their needs and their health, and trying to do what we can to help them out are what our business, our building leaders are probably doing and need to continue to do that and follow through or follow up with their staff. Because unfortunately, sometimes the silent majority is out there you don't ever hear because they don't want to say anything. There are some that are very outspoken, which is great, some that are not so quiet. You know, you have to think about them too. So good topic, you know, we have to be prepared. We're, what are we, not even four full weeks into it, I think? If I'm looking at the calendar right, it could be, could be into our fourth or fifth week here. I didn't count the days, but good topic. As we'll continue, I think it's a topic that the administrators are, I would hope, are looking at it weekly to see how it's functioning and how it's working and what we can do. Because ultimately, down the road, we want to get back to as much normalcy as possible. And that means in-school learning with our students when it's time allows. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heidi.
Yeah, so I, at the end of our MSBA meetings, we all go around the room and share what's going on in our districts. It's pretty somber meetings lately. But just to give you some context, at the table, we have Red Wing, Wayzetta, Centennial, Dakota County, St. Paul Public Schools, North Branch, Pelican Rapids, Hibbing, Shakopee, Monoman, Crosby-Irington, and Jordan, and Mata Beide. And I think I'm missing, I think that's everybody for the most part. And I must say, we were all describing our models and kind of where we're at. Most of us are seeing those rise in cases, so we're not unique. And most of, a lot of them are all hybrid. And just about all of them, if they're not, they could be doing elementary in-person like we are, but they're all hybrid at the high school, including like junior high, so a lot of them are seven-twelve. So just looking at that, I mean, and some people are saying, well, we started in one model and two weeks later, we had to change because they didn't prepare like we had to kind of stretch over our models over two scenarios. So I think we were smart that way. But there's another, the Dakota County guy is like, well, I think we're going to have to reassess where we're at. So I think with that context, I'm kind of in agreement with Mike, and it sounds like Jim too, that, you know, I believe in preparing, but I believe we're kind of where we need to be right now. And especially, I keep thinking, you know, we're not static. We don't have walls around Good Hugh County. We have rising numbers in Wisconsin. We know a number of people live there but work here. Same thing with Dakota County, Olmsted, Wabashaw's counties are, numbers are worse than ours. So I'm, I think we're right where we need to be. I'm not in favor of kind of pushing that decision. And I believe what Mike said is probably true. We're not just making decisions on our own as an educational institute, but we're being driven by public health information. And the Minnesota Department of Health is in on that decision-making too, as far as setting those parameters. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of context about what I heard yesterday from districts all over the state. I think we're kind of right, like I say, kind of right in line with what they've experienced. And some of them are even less, no in-person learning at all, or a hybrid at best. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
This has been a really important discussion. I think it's good to check in with each other and kind of feel out where we're at and how we're feeling. One of the things that I have gotten some feedback on Superintendent Anderson, and I'm super glad that you've got a pulse on it. It sounds like we're thinking about better ways, more ways to support our staff, especially those staff who have a foot in both worlds, teaching online and teaching in-person. I've heard from several staff members, teachers, who are really stressed out about that. It's hard to be able to meet the needs of both groups of students at the same time. And they're feeling that. It's four weeks in now, and it's stressful, super stressful. So the more we can support those folks in their efforts, different resources that we can provide, hopefully, your administration is discussing that, more staff development. Or I know a big piece of it is Personnel getting enough people in to be able to take some of that load and share it. But we hear you, teachers. We know that. It's stressful. We feel for you. I can't imagine doing the work that you're doing right now. And I thank you, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the tremendous amount of work that we know that you're doing. And hopefully, we can do something as a group here to ease some of that burden and stress that I know that many of you are feeling. Any last words, Superintendent Anderson, before we move on in the agenda?
Yeah, I certainly completely agree with everything that you said, Pam. All of our employees are working hard. In terms of teachers who need to teach, you know, in-person and distance at the same time, they're the ones who are really facing significant work and change in style. So we did receive some grant dollars to, you know, purchase the laptops for the high school teachers. We're also making some final arrangements with those building tech leads, moving Tony Kashi, you know, around with his assignments so he can help. And then also, we have some really good staff development opportunities that we're kicking around. And once again, the Jones Family Foundation has really paid for, you know, with a hundred thousand dollar donation for many of those activities. The Wings Foundation has paid for so much technology at Jefferson School. I can't imagine what we'd be doing without both of those generous grants. So we're thankful to that. I know Mike Pagel sent out a survey today to find out more of the technology needs that our staff members are experiencing. Just Whitcomb has been, you know, working with some PLCs as far as kind of the myths and the facts of virtual learning and what we can do so that we can treat our staff members well and provide a high-quality education. So, yeah, we're definitely aware of the work that our staff is doing, and we're doing whatever we can to support them.
Well said. Thank you. I'm going to move us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any items they need to remove or act on alone?
Item six, coaches.
Thank you. Any other items that we need to pull from the Consent Agenda? All right. Seeing none, then I will look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda minus number six. Fall coaches.
I'll make that motion to approve the Consent Agenda without number six. And then I would like to just recognize our retirements and just thank all those people because especially a couple of those have been in our district a long time and have gave much dedicated time to our students. So thank you very much to our retirees. So thank you very much to our retirees on that.
And Mike will second both comments.
All right, motion on the table made by Jim, seconded by Mike to approve the consent agenda minus number six. We'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Bryant?
Hi.
Mr. Christensen?
Hi.
Mr. Derrick's?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Hi.
And her votes aye, so that passes six, zero. All right, Mr. Derrick's, number six.
Yeah, thank you for pulling this. I didn't see a dollar number attached to this on what each of these coaches are being paid. I know they all are working, but really what alarmed me more than anything is when I looked at the football coaches, there's 11 different coaches for football. And it just looks to me like something's out of whack there. And I, I just can't vote in favor of this. Thank you.
You know, I can answer the, the compensation question. These, these particular salaries are included in the teacher agreement. So they're set by that agreement. In the future, we can certainly easily add the, the salary for each one. We have it on each contract, it'd be easy to add. In terms of the number of football coaches, I see that Paul Hartman is on the line. So if he can unmute himself, he can help explain why we have that, that number of coaches.
Thank you, Carson. Thanks for the question, Arlen. I was planning to listen, but it's, it's nice to be called out a little bit too. So it's, our football coaches have remained consistent for a number of years. And really, there are more coaches in football than any other athletic sport simply for the sheer volume of safety surrounding teaching the game properly, the physical nature of the game, the different positions that are associated with the game. But those, the, the number of coaches that we have at the seventh, eighth on through 12th grade level have remained consistent over the last three or four years.
And Mr. Hartman, is it my understanding that the, the coaches, how is that compensation doled out among head coaches versus assistant coaches in any sport? How does that work?
Well, number one, good question. Number one, it's negotiated as part of the teachers' union contract. It's also, we leave that up to, in, in large parts, a discussion between the head coach and myself. Although they want to allocate salaries based on the level that they are coaching, the position that they are coaching. Not to get into too personal decisions that I've had with head coaches, but just professional conversations amongst coaches and then our head coaches speaking with our assistant coaches as well.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hartman, good evening.
Good evening.
Just curious on the yellow highlight on a Mr. Johnson. And my, my thought, my understanding of basketball, I thought, was a winter sport. You have it down for the fall. I'm not quite following. And I know we had some, and I have a follow-up question probably from there.
Great question, Mr. Bryant. We approved all head coaches in August. We went through the interview process for a head coach and hired Peter, pending board approval. Part of the reason, once again, that I proposed the, the head coaches being approved in August is that our head coaches really do, like all of our assistants as well, they consider themselves coaches year-round. There's a lot of planning that goes into any season, especially considering the times here. And there's been planning amongst our fall coaches here tonight for a number of months, as well as Mr. Johnson in the planning stages for the winter season, which was approved by the State High School League on October 1st. So that was just an addendum because I do think it's, it's important that we get these head coaches in place because it is, it's really a year-round job.
Certainly, okay. And how many did you have, how many people did you have apply for the head girls' basketball position? Number-wise, I don't need to know who.
We had three people apply.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, could you go down the, the football coach chart? It looks like there's, you know, varsity coaches and then there's other coaches at lower levels. Can you break that down for us?
I certainly can. I got to be honest, I'm on my phone here. I don't have the attachment in front of me. I don't have the list in front of me.
I can certainly go over a few of them. And then you can just respond if that's okay, Paul.
Sure, yep.
You know, first we have our, you know, head coach. And then we have four assistant coaches, Richard Torres, Christian Flash, Zach Bowers and Brent Stinson.
Okay, so Mr. Torres is our, our defensive staff, one of our defensive coordinators, along with Mr. Bowers, working both at the, the B squad level as well as varsity. Who Flash is our offensive line coach, primarily with varsity, but also works with our ninth and 10th graders. And then Brent Stinson, newly hired teacher, outstanding teacher, along with a newly hired teacher there. And Mr. Bowers is going to be our offensive coordinator at the varsity level, but I know he's working with our ninth and 10th graders as well.
Okay.
And then we have two 7th grade coaches, George Carter and Jim Bergerson.
Yep, both 7th grade coaches, yep.
Yep, and then two 8th grade coaches, A.J. Houston and Scott Perrow.
Yep.
And then we have Greg Rowe and Paul Hughes listed as assistants, but there isn't a grade for them, grade level.
In full transparency, this is part of the, sort of the shortcomings of the contract because the, the contract for activities coaches was, has not been changed over a number of years. And so it's hard to slot them into a given position because on the contract itself, it has a head 10th grade coach, an assistant 10th grade coach, a head junior varsity coach, an assistant varsity coach. I had, so there's multiple coaches listed in the contract that we don't have or we don't pay. So in being fiscally responsible, we decided to keep the salaries at the same level we've had for the last two years. And so those coaches are being paid at what would be considered a middle school assistant salary. But to those gentlemen's credit, they're willing to, to take on the position at a relatively low rate of pay and trying to keep in balance here the salaries that we've kept for our football staff over the last three or four years.
Okay, so, so Paul, we have, we have three teams, three football teams at the high school, varsity, freshmen or eighth. And then, is that correct, three, three different teams?
Good question, Mike. We have a 7th grade team. We have an 8th grade team. Based on our numbers this year, we might have been able to field a 9th grade and a JV, but we felt the safe choice here, especially with COVID and some of our young players, that we would have a B squad. So in going from the top down, Mike, we would have a varsity, a B squad, an 8th grade and a 7th grade.
Okay, yeah, that's just, that's why there's so many of them, because we have a lot of teams.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and because my, you, you recognize a name on that list, Greg Rowe, I'm going to be abstaining from the vote. So.
I'll make the motion to approve the list of fall coaches. Mike.
Motion made by Mike. Do I get seconded?
I'll second.
Heidi, I'll second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, this time I will start with Mr. Bryant.
Hi.
Mr. Christensen?
Hi.
Mr. Derrick's?
No.
Ms. Fair?
Hi.
Ms. Jones?
Hi.
All right, so that passes four to one in one absentia.
Mr. Hartman, are you in around the next couple of days? I give you a call.
Always.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Anderson, the resolution accepting donations and grants.
Yes, we received a donation of $4,000 from the Red Wing Public School Foundation to partially pay for the work of Wing Huey, who has been working with our 8th grade perspectives class. The Deaf Foundation is also donating some money to the cause. And those two donations together will fully pay or nearly fully pay for his work with our 8th graders. It's been a tremendously successful program, very good feedback from students participating.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved by Mike.
Second by Jones.
Meet me.
Any other discussion? All right, we need a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Christensen.
I will approve.
Mr. Derrick's?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Hi.
Ms. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Bryant?
Hi.
And Chair votes aye, so that passes six, zero. Thank you. Future upcoming meetings. I see that. Thank you for attaching board calendar. It's, it's all listed there. Our next school board meeting is going to be held virtually on October 19th, right here. Let's see, what else do we have? The Legislative and Policy Committee will meet on the, nope, that's September. The 19th, the Legislative and Policy Committee will meet at 3:45 virtually. Then we have a school board meeting following that. Finance Committee will meet on the 26th, at 4:45. And on the 26th, we're going to have our next school board workshop. If you all remember, a couple of months ago, we finished up a school board evaluation. And so there had been some recommendations coming out of that session. And as a board, we're going to look at that recommendation and we're going to set a goal or two that we can work on as a board moving forward in the next year. And then we had one other thing that we were going to talk about that night, Carson. Do you remember?
I know at one point, we were planning to talk about hiring practices.
That's right.
So we could, we could do that unless we want our equity team to, to review it before it goes to the board.
I think hiring practices might be better to be its own, its own thing. It's, it seems much bigger than, than squeezing it into our, our own evaluation and, or our equity thing. So I would kind of like to see it set, set out on its own.
I think that's a really great idea. That way, we can give ample time to both of those topics. So we will make that plan.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would also ask the board's consideration to review our email protocol under that, in that workshop setting. We had one established, but I'm not sure if people are aware of it or I'm not sure how many people are still following it. And I think it's causing some division. And also consider examining our own Code of Ethics Policy, number 209.
Yes, and we will include both of those as our board evaluation. I will send out to all of you the, the summary of what was sent to me from MSBA following our self-evaluation for your review. Please come to that meeting, thinking about one or two goals that we'd really like to focus on as a board moving forward and, and for the rest of the year. Any other future topics or upcoming meetings that we would like to highlight? Then the last item on our agenda is adjournment, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Here it is. Jim, I'll second then.
Jim, and made by Jim, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion?
Look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Yes, make sure you watch some football tonight.
Oh, you get football on Monday night? You are so lucky. Two games, two games. Good thing nobody's got COVID on either of those teams.
Mr. Derrick's, we're voting to adjourn. Ms. Fair?
Hi.
Ms. Jones?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Mr. Christensen?
Hi.
And this Packer fan votes aye. We are adjourned at 6:00 at 7:25. Everybody, so Packers.